Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and start Arapahoe County's public meeting today, January 31st, 2017. And today, to my left, Ron Carl, our county attorney, and to my right, Jolene Sanchez, Assistant Clerk to the Board. Ms. Sanchez, would you call the role of the Board, please?
Commissioner Jackson?
Here.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Conti?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Carl, are there any modifications to the agenda this morning?
There are no modifications.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Holland, seconded by Commissioner Baker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have several ceremonies today which are always kind of sad and happy in different ways. So, our first one is retirement ceremony for Bill O'Hare, Tax Compliance Representative Collection Specialist. And our Treasurer, Sue Sandstrom, is going to make the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's Phil O'Hare.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
It's Phil.
Phil. It says Phil on here. Anyway, I apologize.
Whereas Phil O'Hare began his employment at Arapahoe County as a Customer Service Clerk I on July 29th, 1985, and will retire as the Tax Compliance Representative Collection Specialist for the Treasurer's Office on February 1st, 2017. And whereas during the course of his employment at Arapahoe County, he was reclassified to Administrative Clerk II, then an Administrative Clerk III, and in 1988, he was reclassified to a Collection Specialist. In 2004, Phil's position was reclassified for the last time to Tax Compliance Representative Collection Specialist. And whereas during his more than 31 years of service to Arapahoe County, he has been the mainstay in the Treasurer's Office with his example of professionalism, knowledge, and dedication to the job. And whereas Phil has been instrumental in the tax collection process over the course of his career, and has faced many hazards while performing his collection duties, such as blizzard conditions, mud deeper than the tires of his car, overprotective dogs, and an occasional pack of wild goats. And whereas his role as Tax Compliance Rep Collection Specialist allowed him to demonstrate his caring, fair, impartial, and effective collection style to many citizens over the years, and whereas Phil has contributed to the safety and well-being of his fellow workers by diligently serving on the Safety Committee, the Wellness Committee, and the Employee Appreciation Committee, and whereas Phil will now enjoy more time with his family while partaking in all of the wonders of retirement, and whereas Phil will be sincerely missed by everyone in the county, most especially by the Treasurer's Office, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Arapahoe County to officially recognize the contributions that Phil O'Hare has made as a valued employee of Arapahoe County, and hereby declares that his future shall prosper as Arapahoe County has under his dedication and service.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion? Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you. It is bittersweet that I say this, and I got to know Phil because when I do the employee lunches, Phil is always there, being helpful and smiling, and I've really enjoyed getting to know you. And so it is with bittersweet. I congratulate you and move that we adopt this resolution.
Second?
Second, the motion, and also congratulations, Phil.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Baker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Phil, do you want to?
Well, thanks for a good ride. It helped me pay for my alimony and child support. Plus, it's just a great place to work, and I appreciate everything everybody's done. And it is bittersweet, but I'm excited for my next adventure.
Well, I have to add that, too, at the employee lunch, that's why, and we've had some where it was a little slow, at the Sheriff's, I remember at the Sheriff's, they had some big, I can't remember now what it was, maybe some Fiddler's Green had a big event the night before, and so, anyway, we got a chance to really spend some time together, and I also know that you helped out a lot on elections, and trap, having, being the traffic cop there, directing traffic over at the Smoky Hill Library, and yeah, so you've done a whole lot here in addition to your job. You've really contributed in so many ways, and we'll miss you, and you are far too young to be retiring, so...
I'm not retiring, I'm just going to get tired again by doing something else.
Well, thank you very much.
I need to tell the Commissioners one thing they may not know. Part of Phil's job is to go out and collect delinquent mobile home taxes. And a couple months ago, if any of you noticed, there was a big article in the Denver Post, front-page article, about, it was about 300 mobile homes or so in Adams County and another handful in Boulder County that had gone delinquent, tax liens had been sold, and treasurer's deeds had been issued. The person who bought those turned around and put them on Craigslist and sold them to other people, who then went to these mobile homeowners and said, "I now own your mobile home, you can either get out or you can pay me outrageous amounts of money compared to what the taxes were." I got a phone call before that article came out from the Denver Post reporter, asking me what happened in Arapahoe County, how we handled these situations, because there were people losing their homes in Adams and Boulder County. And I said, "We have none of those." And the reason we have none of those is because of Phil, because Phil has made it his goal every year to make sure that he gets out and collects from those people, explains the process to them, even in the middle of the night, I am told, he will go to some of these people so that he can catch them when they're home, and we have had none of those issues in Arapahoe County. In fact, I think he said his goal this year was to collect every single one, and there were two?
One.
One, one that he missed, and it was not occupied, not even by goats. So, anyway, Arapahoe County was not a part of that article simply because of Phil, so we appreciate.
Phil will certainly miss seeing you. Phil, thank you. Okay, our next retirement ceremony, and I'll try to get this right, Mary Ann Jewell, Accounting Clerk, Treasurer's Office. Our Treasurer, Sue Sandstrom, again, sadly, huh?
We knew these people were going to retire, we just didn't know they were all going to retire at once. Whereas Mary Ann Jewell began her employment with Arapahoe County on April 22nd, 1992, and will retire from the Treasurer's Office on February 1st, 2017. And whereas during her 25 years of service with Arapahoe County, 25 years, Mary Ann has held various positions within the Treasurer's Office, but her current position allows her the unique experience of interacting with almost every department in the county. And whereas her dedication, knowledge, patience, and eagerness to help others has been her, has made her an instrumental and almost irreplaceable member of our office. And whereas, speaking of irreplaceable, Mary Ann has mentioned to many that she has been with the county for so long, she came with the furniture and fixtures. And whereas Mary Ann's kindness and joyful spirit has made her a pleasure to work with, and whereas Mary Ann will enjoy retirement, traveling to visit old friends, and spending lots of time with her children and grandchildren, whereas Mary Ann will be dearly missed by all she has worked with, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Arapahoe County to officially recognize the contributions that Mary Ann Jewell has made as a valued employee of Arapahoe County, and hereby declares that her future shall prosper as Arapahoe County has under her dedication and service.
Have a motion?
I make that motion that we approve this resolution.
Motion made by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Holland. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you. Would you like to say something?
I would just like to thank everybody in Arapahoe County, it has been a joy working with everybody, and I have really enjoyed being able to work with every single department. And so, appreciate it.
You know, I think the work that you have done keeps confidence in our county, just like what was said about Phil, and when we're not in the newspaper for negative things, we always like to be in there for good things, but, you know, and that, I think having a county that is financially sound and strong and accurate in the things we do adds a lot for our citizens to really look proudly at our county, so, and you're a big part of that, so, thank you very much. Commissioner Jackson?
Yes, I would just like to say that you're one of the unsung heroes, you know, maybe we didn't get to know you as well as some others that we interact with more often, and you're one of the people that keeps this county running, because without what you have done all these years, 25 years, we couldn't run at all. So, I want you to know that your work has been really appreciated, and it's kind of, again, another bittersweet thing, when you get the recognition just when you're leaving, but we want to thank you very much for your hard work and dedication to the county.
Thank you.
Mary Ann works with a lot of departments throughout the county, who she, and she affectionately refers, I think it's affectionately, refers to all of them as her people, and I, her people, her peeps. I think realistically she can refer to them as her friends, because she does everything with a smile on her face, she's always, I can hear her laugh, I will hear her laugh long after she leaves our department. I did find out, however, why she's retiring. When she first started, many, many years ago, she didn't plan to retire. She said she was going to work until the Cubs won a World Series. Well, those darn Cubs went and won, and so now, Mary Ann, obviously a big Cubs fan, big baseball fan...
I grew up in Chicago.
I can blame it on the Cubs winning the World Series that we're losing Mary Ann, but we will miss her, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. There were a lot of people that didn't think that was going to happen, so, darn it. Our next ceremony is APWA Awards Presentation, and our presenter is John McCarty, Executive Director of South Metro Stormwater Authority. Welcome, John.
Morning, Commissioners, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. This is the fourth or fifth year that I have been privileged to do this. Arapahoe County has always had great participation in the American Public Works Association, and in particular, the Colorado Chapter. We have lots of activities that we are a part of, and we want to thank you for allowing your staff and employees to be part of that. You have, among your current employees, a past president of the Colorado Chapter. Dave Schmidt is currently a board member of the Colorado Chapter. And one of the people that we're going to recognize this morning, Mike Comstock, is a graduate of our Public Works Institute, which is a training program composed of about 100 hours of classroom training. So I would like to just quickly bring Mike up. Mike is recognized for 2016 as the Outstanding Public Works Employee in the state. And Mike works at your East Service Center, and he told me that he has just taken over all of the signs and markings, and all the pavement-related activities out of the East Service Center. I'd like to think that it is because he's a graduate of our Public Works Institute that he is the outstanding employee that he is. So I want to recognize in front of the County Commissioners, the Award for Outstanding Public Works Employee for 2016 presented to Mike Comstock. Mike Comstock, congratulations.
Mike, do you want to, would you like to say anything, Mike?
I was the last guy out there, that's how all the work came this way. Great place to work, I love it out there.
Well, thank you very much, that's quite an honor, and really appreciate what you do, and the recognition is wonderful.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Great, thank you.
Next, I want to ask Alan Peterson to join me. Alan is an employee in your Public Works Department, and he, well, I've just known Alan for a long time, because we worked together when he was at the City of Colorado Springs and I was in El Paso County, so our paths crossed down there through various things. His career path brought him to Arapahoe County, mine brought me to Southeast Metro Stormwater Authority, and we've had great opportunities to interact since then. Alan was recognized this year as the Professional Manager of the Year for Colorado, and it is my pleasure to recognize before the County Commissioners, Alan Peterson, as Professional Manager of the Year for 2016. Congratulations, Alan.
Well, I'm nothing without the great people around me, so I work for a great director that has empowered me to make decisions on behalf of the county. We've been able to put a great staff together, there's done some incredible things for Arapahoe County. So it's my privilege to be recognized in the same company, these great people that I work with, so I'm honored to receive such an award, and I'm happy to be in Arapahoe County. Thank you.
And Alan, you have, you have done a great job. I mean, it's not, not easy, and I think making some, really involving a lot of the folks in your department, and, you know, I think it's made a difference to them, and certainly the county and to our citizens, so thank you very much, everybody.
And do we have anybody from Facilities and Fleet Management? Come on up.
I'm John McCarty.
Arapahoe County has always been very proactive in submitting projects in various categories. And in 2016, one of the projects that was constructed in Arapahoe County, a building project, was recognized as the Large Community Structure Award recipient for the year of 2016. And this was for the Fairgrounds Ground Source Heating and Cooling System. The committee that judged the nominations thought that this was a tremendously unique project to utilize the heat and cooling, the heating and cooling available beneath the surface of the ground, and have it applied and help to reduce energy costs in buildings at the Fairgrounds. So I guess we don't have the plaque with us, but we did present a plaque at our annual meeting to Facilities and Fleet Management, and like to thank you and recognize you for that wonderful project.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. One last thing, I would like to mention that your Public Works staff is involved in a huge project called accreditation. And we want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for encouraging and participating in this process to make your Public Works Department one of, when you complete the process, there'll, you'll be one of about 120 agencies across the entire United States who have earned accreditation. It is a tremendous project to accomplish, and we just wish you well, and thank you for supporting your staff in doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Go ahead, Dave Schmidt?
I just want to take a quick moment to thank John for being here this morning, and to, again, I guess, recognize our Roden Bridge staff. It's really been a transformation within that group over the last five or six years, going back to hiring Alan, but even before that, with the support that we have there, that core group of leadership of Alan, and people like Mike that have been recognized this morning, but also Jim Kapsner and Doug Stern, it's a core group that has really led a real transformation within that group, and they're doing great things. And I just want to recognize them and thank them publicly for the work that they're doing in making my job so much easier, so...
Thank you. You know, and I think Commissioner Jackson and I are always, give this kind of funny story, right after we were elected, we went to, we always have coffee with Commissioner, and so we went, when one of the other Commissioners did that, because we were so new, we didn't know what we were talking about as much. So we go to the meeting, and it was not all, it was a mixture of people, but it was largely Roden Bridge, and they were like, you know, like this, like, "Why do I have to be here?" and not, and you're right, I mean, in the last number of years, it is, it's, they are very enthusiastic, very involved in thinking about solutions to issues, and it is wonderful to see that great participation, and it's due to your leadership and the leadership of your team over there, and how you get folks, you know, all of your folks, and I think people across the county, involved in our line of Rappel on Performance Management, and how they can really play a very special and important part in making this an even better county, so, thanks very much.
Thank you.
It's very obvious.
Andrea's got a great change management story she can tell you sometime, too. Another day.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, Commissioner Holland?
Having worked as liaison this last year with the Public Works, I just want to thank you particularly for your leadership, and also to the great quality personnel that you have in your department. They, early on, embraced, embraced the Performance Management Program that we initiated, and I think you guys have, and gals, have just done a terrific job in putting together the matrix by which we will measure all the performance for the next decade, and I think it's emblematic of, from folding your arms to raising your hands, and I think your department deserves much credit for that. Thank you.
You know, I think Commissioner Conti, when you, hopefully you'll have an opportunity to go to the APWA Awards Presentation, but sometimes it's a little embarrassing, because we have so many recognitions from our Public Works and others that work in, you know, where we work very collaboratively, like Simswa and others, so, you know, they keep calling and going up on the stage, and, you know, so it's wonderful, and we, I know the other, others of us have had an opportunity to go and be a part of that, so it is, it's a really nice event, and it's wonderful to see the recognition for, you know, for our teams here in Arapahoe County.
Looking forward, hopefully, to making application for accreditation around the 1st of April, and hope to receive that later this year, so that'll, that'll be another celebration we'll take part in.
Great, thank you.
Be here for that.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. Yeah, okay, Commissioner Baker, sorry.
I just wanted to also add my thanks to the Roden Bridge group, but also for Facilities and Fleet Management, the award that they were given, this ground source heat pump, it makes very efficient, effective use of the temperature of the water underneath the ground. It's fascinating, I understand all the technology, but Dalton Jones is the one today that accepted the award, and they do have the plaque, so there could be some pictures taken afterwards, so stick around if you have the plaque with you, and you can get some pictures. And Ken Morris was the project manager for that project, and he deserves some recognition as well.
Thank you all. It's a really, really interesting and important project, so thanks for being so creative and thoughtful, thinking outside the box, really appreciate it. Okay, we will move on. Thanks, everyone, to our Citizens' Comment Period, or is there anyone who would like to speak? Ms. Fay?
Diana Mays, B.O.C.C. Administration Manager, reading into the record for Citizen J.M. Fay, who resides at 2575 South Syracuse Way, Denver, Colorado 80231, that's unincorporated. Good morning, Commissioners. Last week, the new President signed an EO over sanctuary cities, counties, states, and their failure to comply with ICE detainers. These jurisdictions stand to lose a lot of money by not complying. Are you aware, Arapahoe County is one of them, along with Aurora, Denver, and Boulder? So you are giving a pass to illegals by not insisting they be turned over to ICE, while at the same time you have no problem harassing, harming, et cetera, U.S. citizens, along with their businesses, cars, private property, et cetera. One might consider this discrimination because of the harm these illegals can do when they commit other crimes that you could have prevented but which you don't care about, while at the same time having no problem ruining the lives of U.S. citizens who live in this county. It is definitely cause for alarm when this county loses money it says it needs because it refuses to abide by federal laws. Second, you have a telephone town hall set for Thursday while at the same time failing to ensure those of us with communication disabilities can participate. You have been told about this many times, and we even emailed your communication person, yet no one has reached out to us to help us participate. But considering how U.S. citizens fall into this county, we, while we are not surprised, you are not abiding by the ADA when you do not ensure your own residents, especially those in the unincorporated areas, can participate, and as such, you can be sued. You also fail to give those of us in unincorporated our own exclusive time to air issues that concern us and for which we may not be able to get to talk to you on Tuesday mornings. Third, we are still waiting for the final resolution on the two illegal spaces next to our garage, along with the stopping of the door being hit, the moving of the pillars, the apologies, and compensation for the harm done for more than 20 years. You cannot sweep it under the rug, pretend it didn't happen, pretend your own staff, along with Cunningham's, did not cause this mess, as well as it being your responsibility to clean up your mess. We want this settled, settled fairly, and done now. Enough is enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Ms. Fay, we will send you an email about how you can participate in the town hall, okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during Citizens' Comment Period? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Commissioner Conti.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the consent agenda as listed.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Conti, seconded by Commissioner Holland. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. There are no general business items today, is, are there any commissioner comments? Okay, oh, Commissioner Baker.
I just wanted to comment that recently there was a traffic accident in the eastern part of the county, actually in Adams County, in which some Bennett High School students were killed and injured. I think I copied everyone on an email that I sent to the Bennett Board of Trustees, I did receive one reply from trustee, let's see, got his name here, Rich Pulliam. He wanted to thank us for our kind words and thoughts. He said he has a daughter in the high school who has classes with all five of those that were involved in the accident. It's truly a tragedy for the whole community, and as small as Bennett is, most folks tell a story of connection similar to his. And I just want to also just confirm in public that our thoughts and prayers are with the citizens and students of Bennett High School.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. It was a real tragedy, and thank you for reaching out to them. Any other comments? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.